Evening at six thirty for all the Woodland Park Planning Commission meeting for June ninth, two thousand twenty-two to order.
Sure. Chairman Hartsfield?
Here.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Here.
Good. Corn for now. Um. Item was approval of minutes from May twenty-six. Any comments or corrections?
I have a comment. My reference to Article six, our section six in the notes when I said that needed to have a quorum, it's actually Article five, section six. I just referenced section six. So it's recorded accurately in the minutes what I said, but it doesn't reference the right part of the bylaws. If you want to add that, I don't care. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Where is it in the?
In the minutes?
Yeah.
It's when we, right before we had Kent Hartsfield come back in.
Okay.
And.
So you're telling me it's what?
Article five, section six, not just section six.
Okay, we can make that insertion?
Just to be clear.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have two small minor modifications. Well, on page two of the minutes. The next, the last paragraph. And the first sentence. Where it reads ours, Commissioner Larson asked after revisited site plan to clarify the location of the proposed emergency vehicle turnaround comma, which has been relocated two units north, that should be south.
No, it's north.
When the turnaround was moved.
It was moved north.
I thought it was moved south.
No.
It's so.
It's on the north side of Spruce and it went further away from Spruce to towards the end of the road.
Yeah, and, and the new road came in there was going from north to south.
Nope, south to north.
South, north.
And we pushed the, the turnaround the further up north on sixty-seven, north on that trip.
Okay, relocated two years north of where it was located in the original smittle.
Yep.
The original smittle shoulder as, as being at the very end.
Nope.
No?
It was down the one before.
Okay, I, I'm confused on that one. Never mind.
Sorry, I'm, I'm certain on that one.
And my other note modification, we'll see if it is. It's on page two, the last paragraph. And I apologize Chairman Hartsfield, but I think that was Commissioner Brown that brought that to our attention regarding the municipal code and the ability to go ahead and deny conditional permits. For that section.
It was not my statement.
So you said Commissioner Brown?
Yes, Senator Chair Hartsfield.
Okay.
And just as a note of clarity. Gratefulness, our rookie commissioner Kennedy pointed out the, the section that he just brought up. And I think it just needs to be recognized that he was there reading the rules of procedure and picked that up. So thank you, Ken, for doing that.
You're very welcome.
And that's it.
Okay.
At least out here I'll help.
Mister Chair, if I can make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll second it.
Take a look, please.
I'm sorry, I went to sleep there for a second. So.
Motion to approve the minutes by Carol.
Commissioner Harvey, second, okay, hang on a second. Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Chairman Hartsfield?
Yes. Okay, taking us to public hearings. Before we get into the public hearings, few points of order. In the last meeting, I did recuse myself to be consistent with my prior recusals on this case. I had performed some services as an architect on the project. And that's been some number of years ago. I currently have no involvement in the project. And believe I could, after reviewing the conflict of interest, which may or may not exist, I don't see anything that would influence me unduly in reviewing this project. And I feel I can move forward reviewing this project and give an unbiased review of what's being presented. Any questions from staff, council, commission, or public? So if there's no objections, I will retain my seat and proceed over the first case tonight. We do have two public hearings on the schedule. We'll get to them. procedure we'll go through is we'll ask staff to give a presentation on the project. We will respond with any questions or comments from commissioners. We'll then give the applicant the opportunity to make presentation and comments. Follow that with more question and answer period if appropriate. We'll then have the open public hearing and we'll take comments from the public. And if we have anybody online, we'll also take those as well. And that will just be comments in response to what's been presented. At the conclusion of that, we will invite the applicant to make a rebuttal or discussion of any points that were made. And then we'll go to discussion, one of the commissioners, and questions that may remain for staff, and then entertain any motions that might be appropriate. So that being said, we'll go to our first item, public hearings, item A, which was continued from May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. It's conditional use permit and site plan review two oh two two zero three, extension of U-Pass self-storage, conditional use permit formerly Woodland Park self-storage and site plan review request by M three X P two LLC and nineteen three five oh group LLC for two-year extension of the CUP and S U S P R approval of the seventy-two thousand four hundred square foot storage and rental facility proposed on the four point seven five acre tract on lot one, Woodland Park Saddle Club filing one in the service commercial zone. All right, staff presentation?
Sure. Sorry, I've got doing two things at once badly. Dave, can you send a chat to john@NES to just, I tried to send him an email just now to let him know that there's no one here for his item and I don't think we're going to need him. He's associated with the second item on the agenda.
Karen, I'm, I'm on the phone as, as you requested.
Okay, and I'm diverting from the, the chairs asking me to present on the first item. I just wanted to make sure you knew that there's no one in the audience this evening.
Well, let's clarify that. We do have two people in the audience, I'm assuming, there for the first item, but they may have interest in the second item as well. Do either of you have comment or interest in the second item in tonight's discussion? Any kidding? No, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just, I sent John, I sent you an email. So my apologies for that. Okay, so.
I, I assume it's going to be postponed, correct, per our discussions? Okay.
Yeah. Dave, where's the share screen thing? Chat. Oh, there it is. Never mind. Sorry, I'm getting there. I'm just really, really tired, folks. My apologies.
We'll try to make this quick and you can go home.
No, you have a job to do. So.
Still make it quick.
I think Ken's on the right track.
Be efficient.
All right, sir. My apologies for that. So, yeah, the first slide here announces the item, just as the chair did. And right now, this item is scheduled to be in front of city council on Thursday, July twenty-first at seven PM, assuming it goes through here cleanly tonight. So the next slide is a vicinity map showing the overall location of with City Woodland Park and where the site is located here down to the southeast across from Toll Road. And then this slide shows the zoning in and around the area with the site highlighted or circled in red here in the Service Commercial Zone District. To the south of that is the Walmart property, the PUD where they are located. And then there's other development on the east side of twenty-four, including some commercial, community commercial properties and multifamily suburban development. And further beyond that is that single-family residential zoning. So this aerial also demonstrates where the location of the property is in this area relative to Highway twenty-four, Toll Road, and so many other development in the area, including the Swiss Chalet and those Elk Grove Townhomes, the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park, and I said Walmart is further to the south. Just to make you guys think really hard, this is a copy of the site plan that was approved originally, and it is turned ninety degrees to the right. So north is actually on the right side of the screen as opposed to straight up. So I'm down here on the lower right corner is where Highway twenty-four is, showing how that access would then come into the site and then that overall layout that was approved originally four years ago. The next slide shows the illustrations that were part of that original approval that show what the, the building are supposed, what the, the different facades and size of the building are supposed to look like. And then I wanted to recap the history of this project. Yes, this, there's two different colors of ink on this slide. The blue is the land use approval steps. The black ink reflects zoning development permit activity. So it was July nineteenth, the twenty eighteen, when this was given an initial approval by the city council through ordinance number thirteen thirty, series nineteen, or two thousand eighteen. After that, February of twenty nineteen, an application was submitted for a commercial development zoning D P ZDP for the, for the building. But due to no activity, that application expired a year later in February of twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty. Also, in that same month of February twenty nineteen, an application was submitted for a grading permit that also expired due to lack of activity a year later. The next activity was related to land use again, and it was July nineteenth of twenty twenty, two years after the initial approval, that conditional use permit in site plan review expired. And it was about six months after that, in January of twenty twenty-one, when the applicant submitted a request to extend that conditional use permit SBR and an application for a zoning development permit for a waterline infrastructure. That application for the renewal went through planning commission and city council ultimately granted that extension to July nineteenth, the twenty twenty-two, in March of that year. With regard to the application for the waterline infrastructure, construction plans were not approved. And then due to a lack of activity to further try and cure that, those, that permit request expired in March of, this past March, March twenty-two. So this year, in a timely manner, on April nineteenth, we received the application from the applicant to again extend the conditionally news permit site plan review. Per our regulations, that's typically a two-year extension associated with conditional use permits. In looking at our code and comp plan, with the comp plan specifically, this map is from the, the newly adopted twenty thirty comprehensive plan. The subject property is outlined in green here in the center of the screen. And that area is identified for commercial development. So this proposal from four years ago does remain consistent with this new comprehensive plan. This was routed for review and comment, and we did receive some concerns from city staff related to this extension. The first one was from Kip Wiley, the deputy city manager and operations director. And he stated that in regards to extending the condition of use permit, I would disapprove the request. It has been about five years with no progress. When they get to a point where they want to proceed, they can resubmit. Our city engineer Ben Schmidt provided the following, and that was that the trip generation requirements in stormwater krause have likely changed from the original seminal. So they may have to do additional improvements on the site. Once they are ready to submit meeting the updated criteria, we can perform a detailed review. So there's not really, there's not any criteria in our regulations that get looked at specifically with regard to extensions. So the recommendation that staff put together was that should planning commission find that an extension is warranted and recommend that city council grant the two-year extension to July nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, then the approving resolution should clearly state that the development is still subject to all the conditions of approval specified within the original approval of CUP eighteen dash zero zero one slash S P R eighteen dash zero zero one from July of twenty eighteen. Questions?
So from the comments from city engineer, it sounds like their codes have changed somewhat since the original seminal.
The way I was reading that, it sounds like traffic volumes would have changed along Highway twenty-four. And then that can potentially alter what's required for improvements on the site, whether it's access or with stormwater criteria. I think that's potentially changed over the last several years. If the extension were to be granted, they, they would, the, the original conditions of approval called for, yeah, final stormwater plans, C dot access permits, those kind of things. They would all get reviewed by today's standards anyhow. The question is whether or not that would significantly shift aspects of the, the site as it was previously approved. I know from talking to the applicant, they would like to avoid redoing the public hearing process related to this application, if possible. So there is a desire to proceed and I guess see if something does shake out of that that is substantial. Yeah, suppose we could set things up that if there was, we could come back to the planning commission. It's not exactly spelled out, but in the right, but what constitutes substantial is not clear.
Ken, if we could have the applicants address those two concerns by Mr. Wiley and Mr. Schmidt and see what their, their thoughts are.
Well, then we'd like to invite the applicant to come up and give a presentation or any comments.
I think for the matter that you just raised.
Name and address.
Yes, Michael Harper, fourteen ninety-three County Road, seven eighty-two Woodland Park. Eric Smith will address that issue that you just voiced. I'd like to give you a little additional background just to give you a little more perspective of what put us in this position. It's very specific and I'm going to read this to you. We thank you for the opportunity of this hearing to review an application for extension of the CUP for the U-Pass storage facility. Who would have guessed that we would be standing here as the applicant once again? But nonetheless, we are. When M three X P two initially applied for and was approved for the cup to build the storage facility in July of twenty eighteen, it was a much different world at that time. The project met the conditions of the application process and was well on its way to a groundbreaking in the spring of twenty twenty. The project had partnership agreements in place, a feasibility study that showed the project model worked in the woodland park market. And our lending process was ready to be initiated. We moved forward and we're well into the process of construction pricing, final planning through the fall and winter of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. With, with our pricing being known and final engineering being far enough along to make cost estimates reliable, we made the final application for lending on the project in mid twenty nineteen. A project of this size and amount of lending required takes three to ten months on average for completion. But as we all know, everything changed in the winter of twenty twenty with the pandemic. Lending applications were put on hold, no matter who you were and what the project was. We had no choice but to put the project on hold at that time until we could see a way forward for lending and revising a start schedule for the project. There were two years of uncertainty in which lending and predictable pricing to support this project was not possible. That, along with price escalations and uncertainty of the supply chain for materials to build this project, again delayed our ability to build a certain and predictable model for our own comfort and that of our lenders. Now, after again finalizing an updated feasibility study, we feel that pricing and supply is predictable enough to move forward with this project. Financing is applied for and we feel certain the project can move forward in the next building cycle. We ask that our application for extension be considered and approved so we can move forward with building this asset to the Woodland Park community. Thank you.
And good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, good evening, planning commissioners and staff. Eric Smith, twenty-four thirty-five Research Parkway, Suite three hundred, Colorado Springs, Colorado. I'm here tonight representing the, the applicant. I'm a professional engineer with Matrix Design Group, a principal at Matrix. I'll just add one little item as it relates to financing over the last couple of years. I worked for five years putting together the United States Air Force Academy Visitor Center project located at North Gate nine twenty-five. We were in the bond market for that project in February of twenty twenty. We did not get the deal completed and financed until January of this year. So we also experienced a two-year delay as it relates to that project. So that has been a very real issue as it relates to, you know, projects of this nature, especially in a, a commercial world. As it relates to the two questions at hand, obviously, from a submittal perspective, final engineering drawings will have to be completed. Matrix will be doing that work. Any changes to code or standards as it relates to drainage criteria will be addressed in a final drainage report and any changes that need to be made to the, to the site and the design will be addressed. From a traffic perspective, I'll add that these types of facilities generate extremely low traffic volumes. There could be much larger or much more intense uses that would generate much more traffic volume. We are looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred vehicles a day. Not an hour, but a day for this facility. There are turn lanes, left turn lanes that are in place that meet the C dot requirements through their access manual as far as length. And then there's the ability with wide shoulder to provide a right turn lane. As far as updating the traffic study, that is also something that would be done as the submittals are made for the various site planning, engineering documents. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the applicant?
Eric, this is Carol Hardy. In the original traffic analysis, was that also an estimate of a hundred vehicles a day? And you're saying that that will not change?
No, that will not change because the I T E trip generation manual has remained, you know, pretty much stagnant as it relates to, you know, this type of use. We would obviously update the study utilizing the most current I T E manual, but I do not expect the volume to change much, if any.
And my second question on the building cycle, on understanding the lending cycle is part of the building cycle, when do you think you will be able to initiate this project?
I'll let Mr. Harper speak to that.
So as you said, it, it depends on finalization of lending. So our estimate of that is spring of next year, so spring of twenty-three.
Thanks.
And I might add, there is additional work that needs to be done as far as site plan applications and engineering work, including the crossing of Highway twenty-four with a eight inch, eight inch water main. So, you know, that would give time to complete that effort so that when the spring rolls around, the, my client would be ready to move forward.
And when will the work on the water main begin? More about when should I be driving down twenty-four and not driving down twenty-four?
Yeah, I can, I, I'm not quite sure on the timing, but it will be aboard water line. So there will be no disruption to Highway twenty-four whatsoever.
But no, in other words, you just plan on doing it as soon as possible in order to meet a building initiation date of spring of twenty-three.
I, I'm not certain when the, my client has that scheduled. I would think that that might occur later this year.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Takes us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Anybody in the audience I missed would like to come forward and make comment? David, do we have anybody online? So seeing nobody in the audience wanting to speak, and no one online, any other last call? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Yes, you have rebutted to nothing, but yeah, anything else to say? No, I believe that. Very good. Comments, discussion, questions? Comments, discussion, questions?
I'll move that the planning commission find that the extension is warranted and recommended to the city council grant the two-year. Extension.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Chairman Hartsfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Includes that item, we'll go to our second item. Which is a PUD. Site plan review 20-22-01, request by NES Inc. On behalf of New Life Holdings Corporation and its affiliated operation, operating nonprofit corporate entities, Andrew Womack Industries in Harris Bible College. To consider a PUD amendment. I guess we. Implement the same public hearing. Criteria, but it's staff for comment and report.
Yes, we will need you to open a public hearing and we do need to do a continuance on this. The reason being that notice for tonight's meeting was incomplete. And as a result, we said, we do need to continue this item to June 21st at 6:30 PM. Steps have been taken to cure the notice issues so that this can be heard on June 21st.
Okay. Staff report, applicants doesn't appear to be present, invite them to make comment.
I am on the phone, but because of the, the issues with the notification, we've Karen had noted that it would need to be postponed or continued.
Would you identify yourself, please?
I'm John Romero with NES, I apologize.
Thank you. And I guess I look for a public comment, anybody wishing to make.
We'll need a motion first, a motion to continue.
Yeah, no, and with continuances, you typically don't do.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said.
We need to, we need to open the hearing to do a continuance, so.
Okay, we open the issue. Then yes. We would not have public comment, but look for a motion to continue and.
I make a motion to move to continue this hearing to the date of June 21st at 6:30 PM, second.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Nielsen?
Yes.
Chair Hartsfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Includes our public hearings for the evening.
And I do need to do a reminder that this is an open public hearing, kind of hanging out there. So as usual, since it's a quasi judicial, quasi judicial item. You know, conversations outside of the public hearing forum related to this item. So on the 21st, you'll have great opportunity to discuss.
Look for reports.
I do have a couple of things I wanted to note. Some of you may be aware that the city is embarking on updating the park trails and open space plan. That's done through the recreation department and at a staff level, we had that plan kickoff meeting this week and. So just excited to see them get started with that whole project, so like most plans, there will be community engagement opportunities. And just wanted to make you aware that that project's ongoing and you'll be, be seeing that in different news releases and updates. The second item is near and dear to everyone's heart and that's short-term rentals. And I understand that July 6th is the date when they are most likely going to be doing a couple of community listening sessions. Around that particular topic.
Oh, what kind of community session, a listening?
I said, listening, I, I, I'm maybe not using the right words, I'm kind of on the periphery of this. There will be a community, yeah, that'll be advertised as well for that opportunity to, to hear from the, the community thoughts and concerns related to these, so.
This, seek public input before we embark on this process?
Yes, yeah. So, and then as we noted in other calls I made of this past week. That our senior planner Chelsea has left us. I, you know, when I first introduced her, I told you that I had managed to steal her away from Colorado Springs. Well, Manatee Springs has poached her from us. So we are again looking for a senior planner. In the meantime, I did piggyback on an RFP that the city engineer was doing, looking for on-call engineering services. So we included a component looking for on-call planning development review services. And there's, out of the, there were four different companies that were selected for the on-call services. Two of which had staff qualified to support us in our activities that we do in planning. So in the, the coming months, if we continue to be short-staffed for any length of time. I'll have some outside help to help review and generate staff reports around applications that come before the planning mission.
What kind of issues would you anticipate that they would respond to?
I would use them basically the same role as a senior planner. Where, you know, we, we do the, the interaction on the ground here in the office. But when somebody submits an application, hand it off for them to actually do the, the review. And generate the report and may potentially have them attending the planning commission meetings to also. You know, help answer any questions and stuff associated with their review that they did.
Should they be paid on a retainer or by project?
I believe that is set up on an hourly basis and no, this is not an optimal way to do this from a fiscal perspective. But from a staff perspective where we can't keep going on the way we have for the last six months. We need some type of relief mechanism and using them in this particular modality. Seemed far more cost effective than trying to have somebody available for office hours, we may or may not actually have traffic, those kinds of things, so it. It really, I, I believe was the, the more economical approach to things. To, to serve the development community and not completely kill staff. From exhaustion.
So are you still looking to fill that position?
Oh, yes.
This is just in the meantime?
Yes, okay, yeah, this is, this is the relief mechanism that I'm needing to execute. But yeah, we did actually post that position last week already and that posting is up on the Colorado Municipal League. As well as the Colorado APA websites, so.
And Karen, you shared with me a while ago how hard it is to hire planners these days because of the market situation.
Yeah, it's pretty interesting, if you were to Google Colorado plant, you know, planning jobs. It's a pretty lengthy list of, of who's looking and has been looking over the past six months or so. The list is a little shorter right now, but I don't know if it's because people have given up or if you were successful in their quest. But no, there's, there's significant demand out there for the skill set, that's for sure. So those were my reports for this evening.
Thank you, Karen. Reports from commissioners?
Just a question, is our consultant from the comprehensive plan ever going to give us a readout on? The three sections of our code that they were going to provide a, an update on?
I'm trying to remember, Carol.
It's section 16, 17, and 18 that they were going to review and perhaps recommend some consolidation of matrices.
Okay, I did get a document back from them. But have not had a chance to review it and. And, you know, I've not distributed it either until I've had a chance to look at it and able to answer those questions, what are we doing next, you know, where does this go? And, you know, we need to be able to present it to you with context and I can't just hand out the document. Without doing some type of orientation around what is it, what does it look like?
So they're not going to be available to provide us that context?
I, I, not in the immediate future, but I. It's one of the plates that needs to just sit over here for a little bit, you know, we take care of a couple of things, so.
Is it something that possibly one of us can help you with?
No, I really, I need to review it and then I did touch base with them and got them to provide me a letter. With some cost estimates for some additional services because they, they did complete what they were required to under the grant. So, but to get additional help to, to then carry this forward. So. I got things in play, I just. I've quite got everything moving forward.
You don't work more than 24 hours a day?
I was just going to tell her she needs more hours.
Not today, I didn't. Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely been, been challenging and of course, you know, being new, things that I do touch, you just have that, that research period that. You know, people that have been on staff for four or five years don't, don't have to do around a lot of items. So that just, that also takes more time, it's just, if there were like five of me, maybe we'd be a little further along.
No, my only concern is that the, the consultant complete their requirements or their obligations under the contract.
They did do that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I did think of one other thing that I've been thinking about since our last meeting.
Yes, Mr. Larson.
Of course. And that is that maybe we should take this as an opportunity to amend our. Rules of procedure for the planning commission and modify our requirement for a quorum to be a simple majority of the. Plank commission instead of the number of commissioners, yes, because there are six and you. I don't know what the process is to amend that, but I know that we review that and then it goes to the city council for their final approval. It seemed like it would be something relatively simple that would take care of this problem that we had last time.
It took the board of adjustment a year and a half to get rules of procedure updated.
We're not going to go to the extent, I'm just thinking of just one provision.
Oh, and I kind of related to this. Tuesday morning at the DDA meeting, I did an update for them with regard to just different development activities, projects that you guys have seen. In recent months and, but before I even sorted into any of that, I did a shameless plug for planning commission members.
I was wondering if we had anything out there trying to get additional members.
Well, whatever you all can do to kind of help, you know, with recruitment, that would be most appreciated. I understand there's a form on the city's website that you fill out and it can get submitted to Suzanne and get that initiated, so. But we do have the ability to have up to nine members and. I, I'm sure that's part of the reason where the five comes from is assuming a full contingent of nine. You know, as five being the need for a quorum. But yeah, we definitely need more to, I think seven's kind of our minimal for optimal functionality. Nine is, is definitely preferable.
Well, that's why I suggested a majority and not a specific number.
Yeah, the, the city attorney could write that up for us and then, yeah, whatever the process is, whether we review it first and then the council approves it.
Let's see what we can find out.
A quorum is five or less, or, or the simple majority of the available planning commissioners, whichever.
Right, if we have six members or.
We have seven members, nine, five would be the, or four could still be the number with seven. So once we hit eight, it'd have to be five and then nine, it could still be five, so you're right, yeah.
Yeah, fewer words are better, I agree.
Any other comments, reports? End of our agenda and we're adjourned.